We begin the meeting today with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we begin the meeting with Mr. Paul.
I believe Julie handed you a contract with there ago timber for the bridge. We talked a little bit about it. I thought you ought to have the contract. He signed it. I think you should sign it. There's a payment schedule in that contract and there's also a completion date in that contract. So I thought you should sign it if you wish, and then we can move forward and get this project going.
Is that just going to be signed by chairman, right, this chairman?
Mr. Calvin Gray Road, Manderen Bridge, 24th.
We just have the chairman sign it. Is all favor of names on it?
No, just one signature.
I move our vice chairman to sign the contract.
$457,000.
$457,000.
My second motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Terry?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Clyde?
Yeah.
Unanimous, thank you.
The second thing is I want to bring you up to date on the bridge discussion. You guys, I believe, know that the state has advised us to post that three times. There is some controversy out there that, you know, there's an elderly gentleman at the end of the road and at three times people won't be able to get in and take care of it. I told the person that was doing the complaining, you know, I only do what the state recommends and I don't know what else to do. She, this person asked if we could put something over the top of the bridge. I talked to the state. The state doesn't recommend that you do that. So I'm going to throw it back at you guys because I've done everything that I think I can do. If you guys can think of something else I should do, then I'm more than willing to do it. Or if you tell me don't post it, then I won't post it. But under the state's recommendation is that we post it for three times because of the timbers underneath and because it's a public safety issue.
That's it. Which bridge is that again, Mike?
Helen Grace.
If you tell us replaced. There's only two people that live beyond it, right?
Yes.
Then they're not harvesting wood now, are they?
Nope.
That was my other question. If they had a wood operation beyond that, anything?
There isn't one presently. There's been some talk. There's going to be one. And I mean, that's always a talk. You know, it's like I said to the gentleman, you probably don't want to cut wood in there and go across that bridge. You know, because if you get caught on that bridge or you cave that bridge in, I don't know what's going to happen to you.
We're going to be liable if that happens if we don't post it, I believe. And if we, if we post it three times. I've had, she's calling me too, Mike, and she's very concerned about the guy that's on hospice beyond there and she has a pickup. She says it's heavier than three ton even her, which he drives. I don't know how big it is, but I'm with him. I tried to talk with her about it and it seems she's got all the answers, but she needs a lot of questions. And she's going to call me back and I told her that I left it up to Mike. We've hired him. He's doing a tremendous job. He's doing right with the book. And I said, I'm not interfering with what his decision is going to be.
I would suggest it's the right thing to bring it to us and I think we have no choice. If we have a liability issue here, it's that simple. I'm glad you, we should make a decision and I approve that we post the bridge at 3,000 pounds.
Three times.
Three times, excuse me, three times. And that's really based on liability accounting and if there's something going to happen. I mean, it won't be long before the bridge is replaced, but between now and then we have to look out for the taxpayers, make sure that we don't, in the event of some kind of accident, we will be liable, especially since the state's already told us it's safe. So I approve that we authorize you to post it at three times.
I'll second that. I didn't get, okay, I'll, sorry.
You wanted to post it three times?
Yeah, I think we have to.
The state said you have to. I think we've got that.
And that's the recommended amount?
Yes.
Yeah, that didn't come from Mike. It comes from the state. I say that we'll get to do it.
Any further discussion on that motion? Same number?
Roll call vote. Terry?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Clyde?
Yes.
Unanimous, 3-0.
I think that's all I have.
Really?
Unless you want to ask me something?
I noticed it's been in some money. We signed a couple. You just signed some bills.
Yeah.
You know, you're just going crazy with that.
Well.
No, no, thank you. Those things that you got a long time ago.
Yeah. I, you know something, commissioners, it wouldn't be a bad idea if you see some of the road we're working on, if you took a ride out and see what we add in. And then you get the general idea. You can see on some sections of the road it hasn't been done because I go to the end of the money and then I say, you're done. Stop. And they stop. But you can see what's left. You can see what we've done and you can see the difference in the road view. We've had a lot of positive comments about what we've done so far.
Could you give us a list of those roads that you have worked on?
Yes.
So that we don't have to spend all day, this is an all-day job, which I did a while. We've done that several times. Thank you.
I will do.
Good day, Mike.
Oh, good. Now, new business. We'll move on to the clerk's report. I make a move.
Good morning, everyone. We have the minutes for the last meeting for approval.
I make a motion. We approve the clerk's report as written.
Yeah, we sign it.
Can I get that? I need that for.
A minute?
Yeah.
I read it in front.
Thank you.
I did sign it. Thank you.
Roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Clyde?
Yes.
Unanimous, 3-0.
Thank you, Vicki.
You're very welcome.
I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
We'll move to the treasurer.
Well, can we, yes, sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Go ahead.
We'll move to the treasurer's report.
Yes, this is Pam. I just want to report a couple of things before I talk about the warrants. But I wanted to report to you that all of the towns and plantations have paid their taxes for the first payment. We divide the total amount due into two payments and all of them have paid their taxes for the first payment. Also, I just want to mention that for the unorganized territory checking account, which is at Skowhegan Savings Bank, I did get some additional securities pledged for it, which is the collateral for that bank account we have. So that it will be insured for a little bit more than what we had because I've noticed the balances, especially after we get a big check from the state of Maine, the balance goes up a little bit. So I took care of that this past month. And for the warrants today, you have two county warrants, one TIF warrant, one UT, and one payroll. And then there is also a warrant for a homeland security grant which comes out of a different fund. That's Fund Two that we have. And I will be up after the meeting to pick up all of the warrants. So if you would please be sure to sign all six of them, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, good. I have a motion. I make a motion. We accept the treasurer's report as reported. Second, any discussion on that motion? Same number?
Terry?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Clyde?
Yes.
Unanimous, 3-0.
All right. Item number three is consideration of the ratification of FOP.
Can we go back to the UT vehicle reserve account on the treasurers?
Oh, this one?
Yep. So when I was putting together the UT budget that we're going to be discussing here shortly, I discovered that we had always had a UT vehicle reserve account. And what that account is, is we set monies aside for when EMA is getting ready to purchase their new vehicle, where Tim goes out and helps with the road signs in the UT. He uses it to help out the road agent. We take a portion. We pay a portion of that vehicle from the UT budget, where that vehicle is used to support the UT as well. So what had happened, Vicki and I discovered, was the last time we purchased a vehicle, for whatever reason, the auditors, we contributed $20,000 to the purchase, $11,214.31 when Tim purchased his vehicle the last time for EMA. And there should have been remaining in a reserve account $8,785.69 if somehow the auditors closed out that reserve and lapsed that money into the general fund. So we would like to have you go ahead and vote to bring that back out and reestablish that because EMA is planning on purchasing a new vehicle in the upcoming fiscal year.
So is that a $20,000 that they want to bring back in or is it 20,000?
It's $8,000. Vicki, were you correct on the number? It should be $8,785.69, correct?
That's correct, Julie.
That is correct, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the number, the amount that needs to be brought back, put back into the reserve would be $8,785.69, 69 cents.
And then we're going to put another 20 in, so that about $28,000?
Yeah, I've got that in the budget.
If that figure did $8,000.
$8,785.69 is what elapsed.
$8,785.
All right, so move. We are a motion?
Yeah. Second, we need a motion.
I made a motion. We do that.
Second motion. Any discussion on that motion?
Just one question from the treasurer. Where does that transfer, what account does that transferred from? So we can put that in the minutes, too.
The general fund.
It's up from the undesignedated for the UT.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You can show us on the budget. We'll see on the budget.
It's not, okay.
When we do the UT budget, we'll talk about that.
Yep, we'll talk about that when we get there.
All right.
Ready for a vote? Terry?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Clyde?
Yes.
Unanimous, 3-0.
Okay. So we'll do the UT now?
Yes. Yep, we're good for that right now.
So you go back to item number three, consideration of the ratification of the FOP contract?
That's correct. We had a, the FOP has voted and accepted the proposal, the draft contract. And just to highlight the changes that you'll see in this contract, it's going to be, hopefully, when we get our two vacant slots filled for patrol deputies, there will be a new schedule implemented for patrol that was agreeable to both sides, management and the patrol. We're going away from vacation based on accruals. We're going to base it on longevity, your years of service with the county. It's at the same rate that it currently has been for vacation. So there's no more or no less. It's just, we give it to everybody on January 1 instead of earning it throughout the year. And the last item for wages was a 2% for this current fiscal year, retro back to July 1, and a 2% increase for next year as well. And the other addition to the contract is for those employees that opt for the family plan for the patrol, the county will pay an additional $348 towards the cost of that family plan per month.
Can we accept this and modify this?
CBA?
Take a vote. Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Same number? Roll call.
Terry?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And Clyde?
Yes.
And I have three copies of the signature page. You can sign all three. Vicki will be making the retro payment this week to the patrol.
So they ratified it?
Yes.
Do you know who to vote?
I do not. I did not ask that question.
You want to move to the next item in the general or you want to wait till we sign that?
Well, Vicki, the next item for the draft statute is, I know you have not seen that yet. So that's new. So I thought I'd just put it on the agenda for today, let you take it home and thoroughly read through it, and then we could actually have a discussion on it at the next meeting.
Okay. Does that agree with all of them?
It is. I want to have a question.
Sure.
I was thinking about this. On the last item, we, I was on the discussion committee with the votes. The salaries of commissioners set by the vice committee, an increase and decrease of county commissioner salaries you have to declare January 1st after completion of fourth year. What happens when you, since we all don't get elected in the same cycle, what happens then if you've got two commissioners or one commissioner?
There would be one commissioner. There could be, it could be one or two commissioners that would have a different salary. Until they fulfill that term.
Well, why didn't we stagger the terms with the commissioners? Why do we have two, one year, and then?
That's the way it was originally established.
I thought one every year and then death.
No, it's only, it's only two before your term, so you have to.
His death, we controlled that because we hadn't had him appointed. The commissioner's appointed and that's how we get into this.
No, those two, those two seats have always been up for election at the same time.
Is that right?
Yep, that's correct. Because Charlie was appointed to fulfill the remainder of Commissioner Hardy's term. And he served two and a half years, if I remember correctly.
Year and a half, yeah.
Year and a half, we got, year and a half.
And then I, and I ran.
And then you ran again, so. See, I was giving you an extra year there, Charlie. It seemed like an extra year.
Seemed like forever, though. I'm going to take that in common.
Okay. Nick's laughing, so.
I was just asking a question. Just curious why we didn't have this one each year?
But of course, they're always held on the presidential, I mean, the biannual, I'm trying to say election years, so it's two years that way.
All right, so we'll just.
Do you have all three signed? I'm just going to collect in this room.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a good discussion relative to how you're going to dialogue about this provision of the county budget statute. Are you going to include input from the budget committee or from the public?
I think, I think this was put together with the budget committee.
With two, with two members of the budget committee, not the whole budget committee.
No, not the whole.
And I think that will be the discussion next time, Ken. What do we do now that we have a draft? Do you want to, do they want to proceed with it? Is the budget committee willing to proceed with it? I think that's all open for discussion.
I would assume you would just give us two letters that have them submitted to be a public hearing, because anyways, I think the discussions we had were in-depth. They were much considered. I was the one who covered the county structures. We had budget committee members. I think the public was here. It wasn't, it wasn't the second meeting.
No, no. But I think, you know, I'll talk with Josh. I would assume that we would want to at some point disseminate that to the budget committee because that has not gone to the whole budget committee. To the best of my knowledge, I have not sent that information out. Our charge was just to sit down and come up and brainstorm some ideas and present it to the commissioners and we'll see where it goes. There really wasn't a formal process put in place.
Yeah, it was, they should see it as well. That this, you had something about you can't have more than one person from each municipality on the budget committee. Why is that a concern?
So a lot of people felt that there were instances, how do we put that? If, if you had like two communities, J and Wilton, let's just pick on J and Wilton.
Yeah, okay.
Or Farmington and J.
Farmington's a better example.
Farmington's a way better example.
Because Farmington has five suburbs and the other towns only have three. For the theory, Farmington could dominate the budget committee.
Yep, Farmington and J could pretty much dominate.
And all the two towns, there's two of them, so we ought to have them for two. That was a lot. It wasn't, I mean, I didn't bring it up. Somebody in the budget committee, somebody mentioned.
Because when we, when we looked at the other statutes from the other counties, a lot of the counties have that provision in there, so it kind of tries to equalize.
Yeah. No, I'm not opposed to it. I just asked the question wrong. Because I know in the past, I was on the budget committee several times and the two of us in the same town.
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense to me, I guess.
Well, you can change and say no more than two, one town. You can do that.
I think what we have works. I think it's good just to spread it around and make sure you've got better representation. So your larger communities don't have more of a say in the process.
Agreed. Okay. So we're going to move on from the application discussion of the draft and then we're going to move to the initial review of the UT budget?
Yes.
Do you have copies of that or?
You have cop, I gave you more copies. I put three up there this morning, didn't I, Clyde?
I've got one. Pick it up and put it in the meeting.
I have an extra one.
See, I didn't get it done. We didn't get the project plan.
Oh, Clyde saw me put the budgets down this morning. Terry?
Julie is just messing on mine.
Here.
I don't see it. What happened? Don't get it. Just blame it on Mike. He was up here.
Well, Mike, I like your shoes, though.
So I can just go down a couple of items, just, there's been some changes on. You're going to see Range Lee for their waste disposal and fire protection is highlighted in yellow. I have not received their written request yet. They tell me they're going to try to have me something by December, so I have just flatlined their request of the previous year. North Star Ambulance hasn't set their new rate yet, so I have flatlined that. I usually hear from them at some point in December as well, late November. Ian?
I noticed the streetlights in Cogan Gorge and Manderen.
Yes.
Which one? You got the Manderen?
The one we're putting in the ground.
Sandbit.
The Sandbit.
Yep.
It's going to cost us $600.
I have no idea what it's going to cost. We're lucky.
Because you got $1,200 in that, or?
Yep.
We only got one streetlight in Cogan Gorge.
Correct.
Okay, and there's going to be one in Manderen.
Correct. With, with power to the building. So, yeah.
They what?
Yep, so $1,200. I just doubled it. We have no idea what it's going to be, so.
So that's a guesstimate?
It's a guesstimate for this year.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Julie, if you look at the waste disposal for King Field, in two years, it's gone $45,000 to $65,000?
Yes.
How do they justify that? I mean, you know, some of them.
And if you look at the requests, we'll have to look at the requests in the back. I believe that is just a... I know they have stopped a lot of the recycling. Clyde, you sit on that committee, don't you?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, so Charlie's question is why the big increase for King Field for waste? And I believe it's because they have stopped a lot of their recycling, isn't that correct?
Yes.
So they have a lot more tonnage that they're physically removing.
Yes, they go by the tonnage, yeah. And we've got a lot coming out of Salem West by Freeman. They take care of all the rubbish from that, you know? And there's a lot coming from UT, so.
I see it's just a guesstimate, so it could be the same.
And I will say, if I recall correctly, the last two or three years when they actually set their, set their budget, it usually is a decrease from what they have requested. When we actually get around to getting billed for it, it usually comes in at less than what they have requested. So that's, I believe that's your worst case.
So that doesn't, wouldn't change on this budget?
Yes, you can see in her letter, it says, as you are aware, the amount for the transfer station isn't officially determined until February or March.
If you look at, if you look at all the towns, the only one that really has gone up significantly, Phillips, Eustis, all of them, it's just one town each year doubled, well, it hasn't doubled, but it's gone up 30 percent, I think, in two years.
Yep.
Whereas you got Cogan Gorge, it'll stay the same. I, I, just ask. All right, there's one.
That's a great question. Why is it increasing and nobody answers? But I think Clyde explained it by saying Salem.
Yeah, and it also is to do with the white goods, getting rid of the white goods and stuff. It has to be different. It costs us more money to get rid of that stuff. And the landfill up there is unique. These, I'm saying, because with the way they operate it and they used to be able to get rid of the white goods cheaper. They're having, they had to change over by getting rid of some of the disposable waste. They're doing a different job than what is being done anywhere, I would say. They haven't been doing a good job.
So I guess the question would be, would Salem be that much larger? Would that be more people in Salem than would be in Cogan Gorge and Manderen? People who actually physically live there?
Cogan Gorge, you've got one, I think, one or two.
People who live there, I mean.
And you've got people that come up.
So would Salem would be more people, probably?
There's more, I would assume there's more people in Salem. I could get the UT report, but I, just off the top of my head, Salem is.
Salem, there's a lot of people moved in Salem.
There's a lot of people.
So that might be the reason. I mean, it just, it just does stick out as odd.
And I, and I think I agree with Clyde, too. I mean, the ability, they're processing a lot more waste now than they did because they can't recycle and there's been some rules changes, so.
We haven't had the vehicle to have a meeting in the counties of virus, but that's a lot to meet. I repented this.
And I'm hopeful, like I said, in the past two years, the amount that they put in for the request, it's turned out what we actually end up paying for the services has been less than what they've requested.
Yeah, but that was my point. Because of that, in the, in the budget, it doesn't reflect that.
Right, that is correct.
To update it, we'd need to say instead of $65,000, we're only going to use $60,000. So the next budget shouldn't reflect the $60,000 instead of the issue this year. So that wouldn't look such an increase.
But the same argument about the white working would also apply to Manderen, Cogan Gorge. I assume it's because there's just a lot more people living in Salem. But it would be nice to have more, more information.
Or King Field because it's a combination, right? Because they, they.
They're only paying for King Field.
No, but they bring them all together and then they do the numbers. Correct. That's what Wilton does for Washington and Wilt does for Perkins.
Most of them base it on the percentage of the population, municipality versus the UT that they serve.
But I think it's the same. I think they lumped them together the way I saw the figures done. I don't think they, they should just do the town of King Field, say, would it be Eustis? And then just chime that same amount for the ones in Salem. Instead of adding them all together, which decreases it. I don't know. I saw the.
I know. It's like going to a town meeting, paying over $100. I don't, it just doesn't seem right that it would be that much more. It just doesn't seem odd that it would be that much more, because, but it's probably, like I said, based on population, so. Would be nice to know, I guess, how many people are using the facility, I think, versus Cogan Gorge. But there aren't any people in Cogan Gorge or Mather, well, Mather's got some people. Mather does have a pretty decent amount of people.
And it's hard, when you look at the UT annual report too, the population they report, they group the UTs together, so it's, they don't report them individually.
Couldn't we use the broadband survey that we did a few years ago?
Oh, for houses, you could.
Correct, yeah, you say, they can't dodge.
I mean, that's a pretty good guesstimation for residents.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be difficult to ask the, the people uses, how many, how people, Phillips, how many people use the dump from Mather? And the same with Kingfield, so we'd leave some sense of, maybe us know, don't they know?
I don't know, I don't know how they, most, I, I would assume most of them have stickers that are given out.
Suzie, she uses the Wilton dump, and we get our Washington plantation, and I don't think they separate them. I've never seen them, I've never seen a different sticker for Washington plantation versus...
But when they, I don't know how they do it, I mean...
I would imagine they would, you know, have separate stickers.
No, so I don't know how they keep track of that.
They don't, I think almost all of those municipalities basically are just straight up what they call the population of the...
We had an issue with Farmington residents at one time coming to Wilton and using the dump, because Farmington started to charge per bag, so the residents of Farmington were popping into Wilton quite frequently. And the town, they drive to the town of Jay, so.
I love it, nobody in Farmington do that.
I, I do know the, Archie does all the pickup up there with the, and they go by his, I think by his figures also, because he does the whole area, and then they got another one that picks up rubbish in Salem. He, he goes all, but he, he has loose beds, he don't have a compactor. But Archie, I know, comes into the meetings with his reports on how many picks up and what he does recycling.
So, he does get a report from those towns, and from Salem? The town of Kingfield gets a report from Archie?
Yeah, we thought Salem, town of Salem, because they don't have anybody up there that runs the town, it's us.
So, couldn't we get that, those reports?
I don't know, like, just tickets.
To take away from that.
I hate to spend my time on this, but if they don't let, we wouldn't find out. If it's populated, they can say, "Well, we've got 300 people coming from Salem, and we've only got 40 from Mather", that makes sense, but it doesn't seem...
They must have those numbers.
I don't know, I mean...
Couldn't we just ask that, is this Leanne?
Yeah, Leanne.
Yeah.
I'd give her a call. So, you just want numbers?
How many people, the people, how many Mather, I think we could ask Phillips, how, how many people you think use the facility from Mather? Maybe the people in Mather go to Kingfield, huh? I don't think so.
Well, Wilton submits their budget, they basically do it on the percentage. You can see the calculation right in there.
Yeah.
It's not on actual people that use it, it's just straight up on the percentage, which leads me to believe, maybe they're not keeping track of who's using it.
Who's using it.
So...
I don't know, we, we might be stirring up something by asking these questions. Like the library report, one of them, I read it, they even have people from Sunset County coming to Franklin County to read books, which is fine with me, I don't care. Once people are reading, I'm happy camper, of course.
I think people from Wilton come to Farmington too, to read books.
Read books? No.
And I don't like it. Stay with it.
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, all that, but we are just fine.
I'll just see what I can find out from Kingfield, so I'll give Leanne a call, so.
Yeah, okay.
And the other changes to the budget, um, you're right, Mr. Pond is expensive. He suggested we put 15% onto our summer roads for an increase this year, which I did in the budget. So, you'll see that number went from 190,748 to 217,975.
Is that because of Mike Pond?
That is because of Mike Pond, and all the road work he has discovered that needs to get accomplished next year, so.
Good, good. He did that.
In the UT deputy line item, last year, we budgeted 111,000, that was for the deputy and a vehicle. This year, for the UT deputy alone, we're budgeting 97,977, and that includes overtime, wages, and all the fringe benefits associated with that position. And the new line item this year, that has been in previous budgets, is the line item for the EMA UT vehicle purchase that Tim hopes to do in the upcoming year, and that's budgeted at $20,000, along with the $8,000 plus that we just re-appropriated out of the undesignated. So, those are the highlights. And then add its status quo, pretty much the same.
Why did the administration do that, for the, went from 66, 645?
That is totally a number that is based, it's 5% of your total budget.
Okay.
So, if your budget goes down, your number goes down, if your budget goes up, your number goes up.
So, 5%?
It's a straight 5% calculation.
Thank you.
So, I will have that discussion with Kingfield on the landfill.
And you might call Phillips too.
You wanna call Phillips?
Well, then you'd know how they, how many people, they, they know how many people, I think Mather has quite a few people.
Oh, yes.
So, you want, so Phillips, you wanna know how many people, if they know how many people are using it from Mather?
Yeah, and the same with Kingfield. Because I mean, what's gonna happen next, if Mather's gonna see this, and Phillips goes and says, "Wait a minute, oh, oh, they're getting our money, why don't we get some too?"
Same with cemeteries, some of them are getting out quite a bit of money, and others only get, one of them's getting 1,900. That was for the Salem.
Yeah, that's a big one right at the end of, that's a big cemetery for the high school. Yeah, right. That's the Mount Avon Salem Association. And then the Freeman Ridge, you got one up there, and UT General, and you got one in, coming on 142, you've got one on cemetery there. And you've got one up in, uh, West Freeman, way at the end of the road. You've got a cemetery that they have to take care of.
So, the UT General is everything that does not have an association.
Makes it general.
Yep, the general that were responsible for the UT.
That's why, okay, that's one.
So, there, there are multiple ones, smaller ones, that we have to maintain.
Yeah, we have to take care of them.
But there's no formal association that does it. That's why you see those two, other two broken out. They take care of the maintenance themselves.
And that kind of, I believe Mike has to see, get him all, and everything.
Mike takes care of the UT General.
Little does it do.
Yes.
So, when I saw that the Mount Avon Cemetery only has two plots left, and they're gonna have to expand, which means they're gonna have to put a fence around that, and that has a metal fence around it.
Has some length, some width to it, and that's, but they, are they gonna be able to extend right there with their cemetery?
Yeah, I saw, it sounds like they have a plan to extend right there at that site.
Way to the right.
Yeah, because it talks about putting another fence up, that's what I meant about, if their budget's only 1,900, and he's going 1,900, how can they do this expansion? With the budget only 1,900?
Yeah, they're gonna need to put some fencing up at some point, correct?
Yeah, they only got two lots left, I mean, people are dying every day, and it's like...
You only got two lots left, you might send it?
That's what it said in the report, I read that last night.
Well, we get the report.
You gotta go up there and count us.
We get the report, or is it coming?
Yes.
So, do you, uh, wanna set the date for the public hearing on the UT budget? For December 1st, 10:00 AM?
Okay.
First Tuesday in December, should be December 1st.
Skip that one here?
Can I do that over?
Yep, yep.
December, what was the date?
December 1st at 10:00 AM, we can do...
December 1st at 10:00 AM.
The public hearing. And that brings me to, well, we should make that a vote. And then we can talk about our next Commissioners' meeting that we...
I'd move the, the whole public hearing on December 1st for the next, next scheduled meeting, oh, no, excuse me, on the first scheduled meeting in December, I move the, since it's December 1st, I move the, have a public hearing on, get a master budget.
Take it or move it, okay? Any discussion on that, further discussion, seeing that?
Rule call, Terry?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Clyde?
Yes.
Leanne is 3-0.
Okay, all right. And then the last meeting of the year will be the 15th?
Yes, and, and I would assume we may have another one just to close out the calendar year, Vicki, correct? No, maybe not? No answer from Vicki, we'll get back to you.
Okay. We got that. Okay. Probably have to, usually we do it though, huh?
Julie?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, yeah, I, I think we'll be all set for that.
Just the 15th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And I have one, I have one thing under miscellaneous also, I'd like to...
Okay.
Well, let's do old business, Terry?
Old business, scheduling annual personnel policy review.
We started that in January and tabled it, because we knew we probably have some changes with the FOP that we may want to incorporate into the personnel policy, the policy mainly the new vacation language. So, if you'd like, I can get a copy of that out to all the non-union employees, and we could restart the personnel policy discussion at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. I don't think we need a motion, but if, if that's agreeable, I'll go ahead and start that process of getting that information out, and...
You want a motion?
Uh, no, I don't think we need to.
Can we do it December 1st?
Pardon me?
Can we do it December 1st to the November 15th?
Well, the meeting would have been the 17th.
17th.
We can talk about that, right now, there's grand jury scheduled 16th and 17th, so, um, I don't know if that's still going to happen, especially in light of the COVID restrictions of going back to 50. I have not heard from the court whether or not that's still going to take place.
And then it leaves till 17th and 18th.
Excuse me, 17th and 18th, okay, I knew it was the 17th. So, we probably are gonna need to move our meeting on the 17th, because we can't be here with grand jury.
So, is it both days, 17th and 18th?
That is what they have scheduled currently for grand jury.
So, you, you should be the 16th or the 19th?
Correct.
And what are your preferences?
It'll be the 16th.
16th, and then one day? Okay, sounds good.
What, that's when we have the Commissioners' meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, the 16th?
Yeah.
Wednesday?
No.
So, it should be Monday?
November 16th.
16th.
Um, month, oh, we're back in November now, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we have the, uh...
Got too many figures here.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. November. We're gonna have the 16th, you say? 16th, 10:00 AM, same time. Okay?
Instead of 20.
Right, right. Will be done by Superior Court.
That is correct.
I think she has something, she has miscellaneous?
Yeah, and the reason to move it by Superior Court. Okay, is that it?
Uh, Vicki had miscellaneous.
Yeah, we'll move to miscellaneous, does anybody have anything?
I do, but Vicki go first.
Vicki, go ahead.
Uh, I wanted to mention that it's that time of year again when the employees are requesting payout of their bank time, if they have any remaining each year, and, and per the personnel policy, they can, um, ask for up to 100 hours. And I just wanted to let you, um, just kind of give you a heads up, I think I have six requests currently, and I have put out a notice to all employees that we would give a deadline on that request for November 27th, which would be on Friday, and we would pay, and then it would be, um, on the agenda for December 1st for the Commissioners to review and to, whether to approve or not approve.
Thanks, Vicki.
Thank you.
Yep.
Charlie?
Can we put on the next agenda, I'd like to have a discussion about whether we move forward with the EMA and community operation. So, we get a man, and him in here and figure out whether we're gonna combine it, or if we're gonna... Because I think what we're supposed to make, something's gonna happen by, if I remember, by the end of the year.
We did, we, when we did, yeah.
We need to figure that out.
Yep.
If we can have that discussion with them. And I also like to put on the schedule an executive session with new register probate, we can discuss our salary, because I'll be, you know, we actually do, we have to have that discussion. We'll wait for it to be paid, or she won't. She's on the, so, can we put that on that schedule too?
I think you should talk with Heidi, I, I think she's, she wants to wait, I think, until January before having a discussion with the Commissioners.
So, like I said, I'd like to put on the schedule, which is, I don't care what she wants, we're gonna have it on here. Whether we have to do it, or I'm here, specifically here, or I'm here, if that's okay with you guys.
It's okay with me.
You care, I mean, why would you?
She wants to wait until January, you think?
Yes.
If you want to do it right now?
Well, she waits until January, well, she starts January, so, if you start, we don't know what pay, it makes sense.
I think she wanted to see what the outcome of the election was gonna be.
I, I...
Well, we're gonna know that tomorrow, right?
Well, did I? Typically, you know.
I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna argue for or against, you know, one way or the other. I think Heidi should be here to explain why she wants to wait, but that was what she indicated to me, too.
I don't think that, that's like a tale about the whole, I don't...
Yeah, I mean, we would have a meeting on, we have a scheduled meeting on 16th, we'd buy her anything, she's gonna show up, and, you know, I don't know what pay, January 1st, but we won't be here, January 1st is, I mean, she's, she's tired.
But I think you're right, though, we would set that, establish that before.
So, we did before.
She came to work. Makes sense to me, I mean. I'll have two cheeseburgers today, and I'll pay you tomorrow, I mean...
So, you're gonna start, the next meeting, she'll, she'll start before she, in theory, she'll start on the 5th, and we, we don't have a meet, she's starting the 4th, and we didn't know what pay, that makes sense. I would ask her to come, if she doesn't want to come.
Yep, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, that makes sense to me, you're right.
January 1st is on a, on a Friday, so, we're obviously, she's pouring in, pick her on Friday, like, she would work on holiday. She'll be in on the 4th, we don't meet to the 5th. You don't go to work, but I don't know what to pay us.
You're not gonna be here, right, in December?
Right.
You're all gonna...
We're gonna do it on Zoom.
Right? He's gonna do it on Zoom.
I'm gonna do it on Zoom, Mike.
Through January, then?
Participate, you just wanna be here.
I mean... I, I know what you're up to, I know what you wanna do.
Doesn't matter, next Commissioner will make you say it now.
I'm gonna fight you all the way. There's no way to start a meeting, because I know what he's up to. He wants to set the salary like Superior Court. We want to set the sal, salary before you leave office.
Well, isn't that how it works? We, we set the salary after the election, right? I'm here till January 1st. And she's gonna start without knowing what the salary is, that's a little strange.
Oh, we did that with Margot, right?
We never Margot right after the election, next, the next meeting, and set the salary?
I can't recall, to be honest with you.
Yeah, we did.
Was it right after Margot, I thought it was later in the year, but...
No, it was...
Yeah, I did, I thought it was never the last year.
Right, yeah.
We'll do whatever you want to. We're getting ready here, aren't we?
You're gonna have a bet on that, you like it or not.
It's gonna be one of those slarders, you're going down there with the ex-government, they're down in Florida.
All right.
All right, anything of the, coming in under miscellaneous? Anything of the command and under miscellaneous?
Oh, I do wanna mention, we had a regular review, like we normally do with US Cell, who provides the county cell phones. And they are gonna be able to tweak our rate for a slight reduction. So with your permission, may I go ahead and sign that contract to get the new rates for the phones effective sometime this week?
I'm on board, it's on, it's less, I'm on board with anything.
It is, it is less, yep, it's, it's a reduction in our plan, yes, for the cost, so...
I'd like to see the whole entire budget be renewed.
We don't have to move, thank you for doing it.
No, they, they volunteered, they came in, they looked at everybody's, what we had.
You don't need that, you, you, you wanna push a vote, you're ready.
Well, I have been signing off on them, but I just wanted to let you know that I'm the authorized person on the plan, but I just wanted to let you know that we had looked at that and we're making a change to save some money. That's it.
Okay. We signed the warrants? We signed them? They're here in the box.
Right there, I'll take them down.
Do you have anything else? Mike, you all sat?
There's one thing I wanna mention. I looked at the clock, it said 10 o'clock, and we done a, and we done a pledge of allegiance, okay? Then I looked at it again, but it was a little after 11 o'clock.
And I know it's a narrow fact, right? Yes, it is, it's not significant.
I have no idea why Mike has a fixed app.
Because I know that said 10 o'clock, that's not happening.
You don't say that, you just stuff that.
Tragedy. Okay, all right. I weigh in a motion for adjournment. I make a motion, we're in here.
I second that at 11:52.
Rule call vote, Terry?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Clyde?
Yes.
Indiana's 3-0.
We are adjourned.